If I hit record, now can you record?
Have you give me permission?
All right, it is six o'clock and we are going to start with this special town, a meeting of the town board. Here on December thirteenth at six P M. I've called it to order. There is no statement of public notice on this one, except I will ask the clerk to verify when she posted this meeting.
This meeting was posted on December seventh and it was amended and reposted on December eighth.
We'll call everyone is here except for Justin Cruz. We will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will tell everyone you're going to have to turn your microphones on for this meeting to say anything. So do you want to say that again?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, it passes and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under God.
Just a couple of items. When you come up to the microphone, if you're going to come up to the podium, you have to leave it at least no more than about three inches away from your mouth to be picked up. If you're uncomfortable with that, you can go to the table and turn that one on to green. Otherwise, all of us at the table must have our microphones on at any time when we wish to speak because this meeting does have to be recorded. The item on the agenda, and I'll just read it and then I'll ask Chris Nelson to start. Is that this is a public hearing on a complaint regarding the class B and class B retail licenses for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for Myers G M Enterprises Incorporated. Doing business as the Cajun Club to consider revocation or suspension of these licenses. And I'll put it over to you.
Thank you Chair Johnson. My name is Chris Nelson. I'm the attorney for the town of Saint Joseph. We're here tonight. On a hearing that's occurring under Wisconsin statutes, chapter one twenty five point one two. This is a hearing on revocation, suspension. Of liquor license, two liquor license that are held by. The business doing business as the Cajun Club. Name of licensee is. G M Meyer, oh Myers G M Enterprises, Inc. Nicole Jacobson is registered agent for the licensee and you're present, Ms. Jacobson, is that correct? And are you Richard Jacobson? And you're represented by your attorney, is that correct? What's your name?
Attorney Bill Hogson.
Bill Hogson, thank you. And so how we'll proceed tonight is the town board is in receipt of a complaint from from a town resident that's been sworn to and notarized. Complainants, Justin Cruz, who's a member of the town board, who won't be participating in the discussion or the decision based on the fact that he is the complainant. The complaint is based on reports that the town received from Wisconsin Department of Revenue Agents and St. Croix County Sheriff's deputies based on a inspection and search warrant that was executed at the Cajun Club on September twenty second of this year. So how we're going to proceed tonight? Is the town board is in receipt of the complaints. The town board summons was issued to the Jacobsons who are present and represented by counsel and we're just going to ask representatives from the Department of Revenue and Sheriff's Office to take us through their inspections, the search, what they found, what they're alleging. And go through some of their reports and exhibits which will be received by the town. And then if the Jacobsons want to speak, they'll have the opportunity to speak and counsel, you'll have the opportunity to ask any questions you would like of the revenue agent and also the sheriff's deputy who's here. Is that agreeable? All right. With that, we'd like to invite Buck Robertson up from the Department of Revenue. And in front of Mr. Robertson is a binder with nine exhibits. The exhibits are the same exhibits that the town board members had. And it's the same exhibits that have been delivered to the Jacobsons via their attorney. So everyone can follow along when they're, when we're referencing exhibits. One through nine. So with that. Agent Robertson, can you tell us your name and where you work and a little bit about your, your background?
Sure. My name is Buck Robertson. I'm a special agent with the Department of Revenue Alcohol Tobacco Enforcement Unit. I have been employed in that capacity for the past six months. I started there in June twenty, June twentieth of two thousand and twenty two. Prior to that, I have seventeen years of law enforcement experience. I was a deputy and a deputy sheriff sergeant at Washington County Sheriff's Office for fifteen years. And then I was a lieutenant at Waukesha County Sheriff's Office for two years prior to that to moving to Eau Claire. And taking on the role of the special agent from the Department of Revenue.
Is the Department of Revenue charged with enforcing Wisconsin liquor laws?
Yes, we are.
And as part of your becoming a agent with Department of Revenue, have you received training on Wisconsin's liquor laws?
Yes, even prior and by law enforcement career prior to coming to the Department of Revenue. A lot of the statute of one twenty five, which pertains to the alcohol laws of Wisconsin. We're trained in that. And then once you come to Department of Revenue, there is a three month, between three and four month long training process where you're assigned to senior agents and you train with them for a week at a time. And you just kind of bounce around the state. There are ten of us throughout the state of Wisconsin. Two in Eau Claire, three in Madison, two in Appleton and three in Milwaukee. During your training phase, you put a different cities and you train with the different agents for up to a week at a time. And they, their responsibility is to teach you the more in-depth aspects of statute one twenty five.
And you've been through that training process?
Yes, I was.
Okay. And I believe you said you also worked with statute one twenty five before you were revenue agent with the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, I did.
Okay, fair. And it's my understanding that you were involved in an inspection that occurred at the Cajun Club?
Yes, it was.
Okay, can you tell, tell us how the Cajun Club came to the department's attention?
Yes, during my training phase, I was out with my, with the senior agent, Agent Mario Altazar, who was training me during that time. Part of our job or his job was to make introductions for me to go to different counties. We each have a different number of counties that we supervise. I happen to supervise eleven different counties in Wisconsin. Mostly center, central, western part of the state. Agent Altazar has the northern, northwestern part of the state. As he was training me, he had taken me around to different locations out in here in St. Croix County. He had a contact with investigator O'Keefe and he arranged a meeting for us to meet.
And investigator O'Keefe is, who does he work for?
He works for the St. Croix County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, and he requested a meeting with Department of Revenue Agents?
No, Mario Altazar, I believe reached out to him and say, hey, we have a new agent for your county. We would like you to meet him. And that's how the introduction happened where there was no specific items on the agenda was more just an introduction to meet. So that we could hopefully work together in the future.
And how did, was there a concern at any point raised about the Cajun Club by either Shane Croix Sheriff's Office within the department or from complaints that you had received?
Yeah, so while training with Agent Altazar, he had, he, his job to kind of to point me in some directions, hey, you know, watch out for this establishment, watch out for that establishment. There's been issues here in the past, there's been issues there in the past. So when we met with investigator O'Keefe, I asked him, I said, are there, you know, with this, with St. Croix County being one of my counties I supervised, I asked him, do you have any problematic areas or establishments in your county? And he named a few and he had brought up the Cajun Club. And Agent Altazar kind of confirmed that confirmed it with him that, that there's been issues there in the past or there's been rumors of illegal activity going on there. Anywhere from weapons to drugs to prostitution, to different, different types of criminal activity stemming from the Cajun Club.
And is it based upon these reports that it was determined that the department would conduct inspection of the premises?
Yes, so in speaking with investigator O'Keefe, he had told me a few different cases that the St. Croix County Sheriff's Office had tried to investigate. And ultimately did not receive a warm welcome from the Cajun Club. A few in specific where a deputy had tried to do an inspection there earlier this year and was asked to leave, was asked to not do the inspection, just asked to leave. At that time, they were having a problem with the Cajun Club. So a lot of, anytime they had incidents there and referred to St. Croix County. They were conducting, were having reports being done. So investigator O'Keefe had reports for all these instances. That one was concerning that the deputy was asked to leave and not conduct a investigation there or an inspection there of their own because as law enforcement officers, they can do inspections of licensed establishments as well.
And when you say they can do inspections of licensed establishment, is that Wisconsin law that a sheriff's deputy can inspect a licensed premise?
Yes, so they can inspect the license, make sure that it's valid and current. They can inspect operators permits, make sure that there's a working operator. They can do a lot of the statute, the statutory elements of one twenty five that we can do. Ultimately, and we have a little bit more teeth in our enforcement action, but they can pretty much do everything that we can. They're just may not be trained as in depth as we are on it.
If, oh, I'm sorry. No, if, if, for example, sheriff's deputy was denied the ability to inspect a license premise, are there consequences to that?
Not necessarily for a sheriff's deputy or work of law enforcement. I mean, they could get a warrant, but even dealing, even in my prior career as a, as a lieutenant and a sergeant and a deputy, I was not fully aware of what aspects the Department of Revenue Alcohol Tobacco Enforcement Agent could do. So that was another part of our training requirements is to go out and say, this is what we can do for you if you run into these roadblocks. So there was a major red flag that earlier this year, a deputy was, went in there to do an inspection or to, to check the premises out and was denied. And I think that the deputy did the right thing. He did not escalate, he deescalated, he left. And ultimately reported that back to investigator O'Keefe and his department that he was not allowed to do the inspection. There was also another red flag where with weapons violations there, shots being fired in the parking lots, all lead to, to red flags being raised at the Cajun Club, which then would draw our attention to that premise.
So prior, prior to you showing up with Department of Revenue, Revenue Agents to conduct an inspection on September twenty second, you were aware of reports of, of gunshots in the parking lot? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and keeping, so I guess if you back up a little bit, I believe we had met with investigator O'Keefe in August timeframe. We had worked out to do some inspections at some local establishments here in the county, one of which being the Cajun Club. Investigator O'Keefe, being a deputy of this county, he was fully aware and had a very in-depth knowledge of what likely would happen. So we did prepare for what likely would happen. We set up some meetings with the DA's office and with the judges to make sure that if things went the way that the or that's your Keith thought they would, that we would be prepared for an inspection warrant and any criminal charges as well.
And when you say the, the way things you suspected they would go, you, do you mean denied the ability?
Denied inspection, yes. That's what we ultimately prepared for. And that's what we were expecting when we went as Department of Revenue Agents to go and do the inspection as well.
Hi, in front of you, we talked about this a little bit. This is the exhibit book here. You can turn to exhibit one. Now, is this the liquor license for the Cajun Club?
Yes, it is.
And do they have two licenses?
Just to point out, this is the expired one.
Oh, they have a current license.
They do have a current one.
Okay, fair enough. And it's for intoxicating liquor and fermented malt beverages, right?
Correct.
All right, fair enough.
And then a tobacco and cigarette as well.
All right. And then if you could turn to exhibit two.
Yes.
Do you recognize this?
I think this is more specific to your township, but it's just indicating that Nicole Jacobson is the agent for said liquor license and cigarette and tobacco license.
I think that's the second page of exhibit one, if you could go
Okay.
A little bit farther to the tab that's number two.
So when you ask it for familiar, each municipality can have their own liquor license. They're not, there's not a standard liquor license to be issued. So they can look differently than.
I'm referring to the document that says complaint report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong one. Okay, so yes, sir.
Do you recognize this?
Yes, this is my incident reports of the inspection from September twenty second, two thousand and twenty two.
Hey, can you take the board through basically the events of September twenty second, twenty two and your inspection?
Sure. That night, we had met with investigator O'Keefe and some of his other deputies at the St. Croix County Sheriff's Office. I had brought up about five other agents from other cities to come and assist as well. Ultimately, it came down to officer safety. With the incidences that have been reported there in the past, I believe. Obviously, deputy or investigator Keith can probably speak to it more than I can, but three, four dozen calls in the past year or so. Shots being fired in the parking lots, guns, drugs, stuff like that being reported, drug dealing being reported out of the establishment. So it was determined to go in there with a, I guess, a show of force that a number of agents and a number of deputies from the county so that there was no safety issues could have be had there. So we met at the St. Croix County Sheriff's Office prior to showing up at the establishment. We kind of had a briefing there and then we went to the club. At that time, it was determined that there were kind of two separate bar areas. There was a bar over by the stage and dance area. And then there was a kind of a second bar over on the other side. We were kind of told that it was more like a sports bar area. We didn't know if one or both were in operation. We prepared that they were both going to be in operation. So at that time, it was determined that myself and Agent Altazar would go in with investigator Keith and go to one side of the establishment. While another two agents from my unit, Alcohol Tobacco Department of Revenue and another deputy from St. Croix County would go to the other side of the bar. And try to make contact with the owner manager, whoever would be in charge of the premise at the time.
And were you able to make contact with somebody?
Yeah, so we initially made contact with an individual who identified himself as Griffin. And he said that he was the assistant manager of the location. We identified ourselves, showed our identification and our badges and told them who we are and what we're there for. That we're there to conduct the inspection of the licensed premises. He said, okay, he identified himself as assistant manager. So at that time, I'd asked if the manager was working. We knew that the manager was Dominic or DJ. We asked for him. He said he didn't know where, where he was at that time and he was nowhere to be found when we arrived. So identifying, Griffin identified himself as the assistant manager. I took it that he would be the next likely person in charge and he said, go ahead. Agent Altazar and I began our inspection from behind the bar at the dance floor area. We were stopped by the bartender. At this time, I don't recall her name. I don't know if it's in this report. Crystal. She kind of said, nobody was allowed behind the bar. We again had to identify ourselves and say who we were and what we were doing. Then she allowed us to continue on. Ultimately, DJ Dominic showed up. I again identified myself, told them who I was. I was an agent with the Department of Revenue Alcohol Tobacco and that we were there for an inspection of the licensed premises. He said, okay. He made some phone calls. We continued our inspection. So I had some, like I said, I had five other special agents there from the Department of Revenue. Some of them had started in the front. There was a kind of a closet area in the front of the establishment towards the front doors. There was the bar area near the dance floor area and then there was a bar area on the other side. So I had agents in each of those locations starting their inspection because we were given permission by about DJ, who was the manager. Ultimately, I told DJ, informed DJ that I would need to see invoices for the supplier, the stock of the liquor. That is one thing required by law that the establishment needs to have two years of invoices for all of the beer, liquor, wine, intoxicating beverages at the, on the premise. He stated that they were in the owner's office and he did not have a key for the door for that office. I told him that ultimately we would need to see those invoices. Because without those invoices, all the liquor, beer, wine was subject to confiscation. So he made a phone call to the owner, which was Richard at the time, and they had spoke. I don't know the exact comments of, of their phone call or their interaction. Ultimately, he, I was told that I could not conduct the inspection, that they were denying the inspection.
When you say you were told that they were denying the inspection, who, who told you that you were denied the right to inspect?
So initially DJ said that we couldn't go into the office.
Okay.
And I wanted to clarify, I want a clarification if they were going, if they were denying the inspection. I asked to speak to Richard. I informed Richard who I was, what I was there for, that I needed to see invoices, that we needed access to that location. And he stated that he could be there in about an hour. I told him that we were there now. I specifically asked him, I said, are you denying consent for us to inspection at this time? He stated, yes, at this time.
And Richard, is that Richard Jacobson?
Richard Jacobson, yes.
Okay. And from about the time the inspection started to the time that you were told to stop the inspection or the consent was revoked, however you wanted to determine, term it. About how long was that, if you recall?
I would say in the range of fifteen to twenty minutes.
Right. And you said there were about five agents or that were involved in the inspection?
Correct. And they were already conducting inspections in different areas of the establishment.
And did they find anything that was of concern to you?
Yeah, so about the same time of me speaking with Richard and him denying consent. I wanted somebody on premise that was on scene, that had control of the premise to tell me no. I handed the phone back to Dominic. They spoke. Dominic then told me I do not have consent to conduct the inspection. At that time, that is a violation of the law, an arrestable offense. Dominic was arrested for denying the inspection. He was taken out of there. At that same time, I was informed that another agent, Agent Jason Lee from our departments, from Department of Revenue had located a firearm, a gun, some drug paraphernalia in the front. I don't exactly know what the room was, kind of like a bouncer room, a, a storage room in the front of the building near the front entrance. So at that time, we were stopping on two different fronts. On the first front of, we were denied the inspection. We were going to seek an inspection warrant. And two, we had found paraphernalia, drug paraphernalia and weapons in the establishment. We were to turn that over to St. Croix County Sheriff's Office and also they were going to seek a warrant as well.
All right, so did you state you found one firearm on the, the premises during that initial inspection?
Agent Lee found one firearm, I believe there, yes.
Okay.
And some drug paraphernalia.
Are you aware whether or not the firearm he found was loaded?
I do not recall if it was loaded or not.
All right. And when you say drug paraphernalia, do you recall specifically what was found?
I believe there were some glass pipes used for smoking marijuana and or smoking methamphetamine.
Were any of these pipes tested for substances?
We would not test that. Would we would turn that over to the St. Croix County Sheriff's Office for them to test.
Okay. So at this point, you were denied the ability to continue to inspect ultimately by DJ, is that correct?
By Richard via the phone, by Richard Jacobson via phone and then by Dominic, who was on scene.
Okay. And what were your next steps after you were denied inspection?
So at that point, I had all agents stop the inspection. We basically locked down the scene because it was not just a denial of the inspection, but there was also drugs and drug paraphernalia and weapons found on scene. So there are other criminal criminal aspects that St. Croix County had to look into as well. So the premise was locked down. Nobody was able to leave at that point if they wanted to leave. They were subject to a search from St. Croix County Sheriff's Office. At that point, then Detective Investigator O'Keefe and I then began working on warrants. I was seeking an inspection warrant through St. Croix County Sheriff's Office. While investigator Keith was seeking a search warrant for the potential discovery of other weapons, contraband, drugs on scene.
Can you turn to exhibit three, tab three?
Yes.
Now, this is labeled at the top affidavit for special inspection warrant. Is that, are you looking at that one?
Yes.
All right. Do you recognize this document?
Yes, this is an inspection warrant that we utilize as the Department of Revenue Alcohol Tobacco Enforcement.
Okay, and it states Buck Robertson, a special agent with the Department of Revenue. That's you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is this an inspection warrant affidavit that you applied for to get an inspection warrant from a judge?
Yes, it was.
All right.
Part of that was to make sure that the Cajun Club did have a, a current invalid liquor license, a tobacco license. We identified the locations that we were going to inspect. And then the facts that led up for the reason for the inspection warrant as well.
Okay. And then I'd like you to turn to exhibit four.
Yes.
Is this the inspection warrant that was granted?
Yes, it was.
And so at this point, when this warrant was granted, what did you do next?
So once the warrant was signed by the judge and sent back to us, they were both signed by the judge and sent back pretty much at the same time.
When you say both, what?
So the inspection warrant for the, I sought for the inspection of the premise of the license premise for the liquor license and the tobacco license. And then investigator O'Keefe's search warrant for other criminal activity, criminal contraband that could be located on scene. Those were both applied for at the same time. And then we received them back at the same time.
Good. And after you received them back, did you continue your inspection?
Yes, at that time, the Jacobsons had shown up at the facility, at the building. We were discussing with them the events that had occurred and what had happened and what we were doing at this point. They were not allowed to go into the building at this time because we did have the warrants and the scene was secure at the, at this point. There were some workers inside of the bar that wanted to see the warrants before they would let us search them. So investigator Keith and I took the warrants into the bar, showed them to several of the employees. Who then would allow us to conduct our searches of their persons and their property before them being released.
And about how long did the, af- after you received the inspection warrant, about how long did your inspection continue after that? Do you recall?
I'm just looking to see if there was a time on. I'm just looking to see if there was a time on. The warrant. I would say i- it was at least another couple hours of doing the inspection. We, we searched the entire premise. Um, we looked for, we mean, we're looking for anything small as receipts from a store. To the small shooter liquor bottles. To a single cigarette. So I mean, we're kind of doing a, a pretty detailed inspection. We're also, at this point, we allowed Richard to come in, go to his office and provide us invoices. Uh, so I had one agent specifically looking at invoices. One agent looking at the stock in the stockroom. And then those two agents getting together to confer and make sure everything was. Good to go with the inventory and the invoices of the liquor.
When you say good to go with the inventory and the invoices of the liquor?
To make sure everything aligned and matched up that the liquor in their stockroom was covered by the invoices that they had on scene.
Is that a requirement of Wisconsin law?
It is, yes.
And when they did that check. Uh, was the liquor in compliance? Were there invoices for the liquor?
There were uh approximately ninety bottles of liquor that were not covered by invoices. That ultimately were confiscated. Um, and speaking in more detail with Nicole about that and, and Richard Jacobson was that. Those invoices had recently been taken to their attorney or their tax preparer. Um, and that's why they were not on scene. That they could get us those invoices at a later date. Um, I told Nicole, if that was the case, I would accept that and any invoices that she would turn over to me. Um, in the future that I would look through them and potentially give um some of that liquor back to them.
And did they turn over invoices to you at a later day?
She did. I believe that following week, she turned over, they both responded to the Eau Claire office where I work out of. And handed me a stack of invoices, yes.
And did you say that uh ninety bottles were?
I believe the initial was about ninety bottles that were not covered under the invoices.
And of those ninety bottles, approximately how many have been returned to the Jacobsons or to the Cajun Club?
Out of those ninety, I believe about twenty-five. Or so.
Were returned?
Were returned.
Alright, does that, does that mean those that weren't returned receipts have not been produced at this time?
Yes, because the invoices were either too old or just didn't cover. Uh, they didn't cover the stock or the inventory.
Okay. So we've talked about. Some of the invoices and your uh confiscation of, of some alcohol that was present at the Cajun Club. During your inspection, did you observe anything else that you believe to be violation of Wisconsin liquor laws?
Yes, we had located a one seven five liter bottle, so that's a larger, the larger bottles. Located one of those of Jack Daniels. Uh, on top of the cap of that, we located a black, smaller black funnel. Um, which would indicate to us as agents of refilling. Um, refilling is a crime in Wisconsin. You cannot refill, even if you're filling brand for brand. You cannot uh refill from a one seven five bottle down to a smaller one liter bottle. A lot of times. A lot of times those one seven five bottles will not fit into a rail of, at the bar. So then they'll take it and they'll pour the, you know, they'll pour brand for brand. But ultimately, why it's illegal across the board is because sometimes people are um misleading and they'll pour. High quality liquor into low quality bottles or vice versa. They'll pour. A, a low quality liquor into a high quality bottle, um, refill that way. To uh, kind of essentially steal from their customers. Not saying that the Jacobson were doing that. I had spoken to uh Richard and asked him why there was the one seven five bottle with the larger. Bottle with the funnel in the back room, and he had indicated to me that he was refilling into the smaller bottle of Jack Daniels.
And that's something that you said Mr. Jacobson told you that he was doing?
Yes, he was in his office uh talking with uh. One of our agents uh going over the invoices. I was pointed out to me and I went and asked him what that, and that's what he had responded with.
Can you turn to tab eight, please?
Yes.
Okay, and there's two pages with photographs on, on them. Do you recognize those photographs?
Yes, those are the uh, that is the one seven five bottle of Jack Daniels with the black funnel. And then how it was stored, how it was found with the funnel on top of the bottle.
So you've talked about invoices, you've talked about um refilling. In your inspection, did you um? Did you conclude that any other uh Wisconsin liquor laws were, were violated?
So during this investigation, I was the lead investigator, so I was doing most of the talking. Uh, kind of just checking on each agent as how they were progressing through the, the inspection. Uh, Agent Altazar was the one who was conducting the field report, which is exhibit six. So he was the one that completed the field reports and ultimately had a more detailed list of. Violations that were found at the club.
Are you familiar with uh Agent Al- Altazar's field report?
Yes, I have reviewed that.
Okay, and wh- what were some of the violations that he indicated?
Um, in going down. The field reports. The license, there were some licensing issues. However, I knew their licenses were current and valid because just prior to the inspection. Uh, part of the obtaining an inspection warrant is that they have to have a clear. Valid license, alcohol license or tobacco license. So I had checked with the clerk for the town of St. Joseph to ensure that they were current and valid. So I knew that they were current and valid. However, they were displaying licenses that were expired. So that is indicated on here in exhibit six. And then if you go down under the alcohol beverages area. There, he indicated that there were signs of refilling. Um, I, it was evident with the funnel and the Jack Daniels bottle that we have already discussed. Um, we had found contaminated liquor. So generally that is contaminated liquor is usually uh fruit flies and, or flies in the liquor bottles. Um, it's, they found five bottles that were contaminated. That is not something that is unusual, that is pretty common in most establishments.
So, and I just want to be clear on this one, when you, when you were talking about contaminated in this instance, we're talking about. Fruit flies being in liquor bottles, you're not alleging that there were substances or anything like that that were put in.
Correct, yes, if there were substances. Such as drugs or, or if you want to refer to them as like roofies or something like that, that would have been turned over to St. Croix County. So when we look for, when we inspect liquor bottles. We're checking for basically contaminants of flies, bugs, those type of things. If we get reports that. That a bartender or somebody is putting something in it, usually it's going to be a drink specific, not a bottle specific. Unless we're told that, you know, this bartender uses said bottle under the cabinet all, I mean, that was not the case with the Cajun Club though. So the contaminants that we're referring to here uh are the, are the flies or fruit flies that would have been found in bottles. Um, continuing down his inspection, field reports. Invoices, so invoices were not on premise. Like I said, there were a few months of invoices that were taken to their uh tax preparer. Or attorney, I, I can't remember if it was one or the both. Um, so with that, a lot of the invoices had issues where. Uh, did not cover the stock. Invoices were not properly repaired, properly in sequence. Or retained for two years. So when we go in inspections, a lot of bars and premises, um, they get liquor and beer from several different distributors. So a bar or a retail establishment is required to buy from a wholesaler or distributor for their liquor and beer. And some wholesalers and distributors only sell certain brands of beer. So sometimes, a lot of times. Bars have to buy from several different wholesalers or distributors. So when we talk about invoices being properly prepared and sequenced. Uh, they technically should be somewhere in a folder like this. If they're getting them from. Saratoga or Badger or whatever, then they should essentially have files for each of their liquor companies or distributors that they're getting from. They need to be uh retained for two years and they should be in sequence by month by their each vendor. So that wasn't the case. They were kind of just all over the place. And then obviously they did not cover the stock when we, when we compared the invoices that were on premise or on scene. To the liquor inventory in their liquor inventory room. They did not uh match together. So that's why there was liquor that was confiscated. Uh, continuing down. The cigarettes appeared to be in order. And then the other issue under the miscellaneous was uh. Five video gambling machines, which the video gambling machines are illegal in Wisconsin. For anyone essentially to possess, they're not supposed to be in any establishment. If they are in a class B, it is a misdemeanor. If they are in a class A, they're a felony. So. The Cajun Club owns or has a class B, so they were, they had their five gambling machines in there. Were, at this point, we are not taking enforcement action on them. But we did issue a ten day removal order for the video gambling machines uh for the Cajun Club. I'm looking at the comments from the field reports. Agent Altazar just kind of summed up uh with statute numbers, all of the. Violations that we had located um from his above check sheet. But pretty much everything we have already discussed.
Uh, will you turn to exhibit five and look through it to its headline supplement activity report?
Yeah, so this is Agent Altazar's uh supplement case report that he had done. Just because he had done the paperwork, he had done the field reports. And he also had done the property receipts for the uh liquor and beer and alcohol that was confiscated. So because he completed those two forms, uh, he did complete a supplemental report. I guess in more detail of what had occurred.
Now, in the um. Box on the report where it says statutes, and then there's a number of statutes listed. Uh, what is that indicative of?
So those are the statutes that we found that the business was uh generally in violation of. Uh, that he also, Agent Altazar likes to put a lot of statutes on there that uh. Are kind of a helpful reminder to people too, if they were to pull this report. That they would need to see that the statute numbers that I'm referring to, buying liquor from a distributor or wholesaler. Um, the inspection statute that gives us the right to conduct an inspection. Uh, the preservation of records or the preservation of invoices. The license and uh permits that need to be framed and posted and available for public viewing. He indicates the refilling statutes. The statute for unlawful possession of cigarettes. Uh, the statute for seizure and confiscation of cigarettes.
I could ask you to turn to, I'm just looking, I just wanted to see, I believe there were some.
Minnesota cigarettes that were found on the premise as well. So yeah, there were a couple of cigarettes, packages, packages, twelve, twenty-four packs of cigarettes that were. Confiscated that they were not covered by invoices as well. So that's why Agent Altazar kind of re- or does refer to the. Uh, cigarette statutes.
But al- ultimately, if we're talking about the liquor license, we're not overly concerned about the cigarettes. Would you agree?
Okay.
Alright, um, now, can you turn to uh? Tab seven, please, and take a look.
Yes.
Uh, what is this document?
This is the report that Special Agent Jason Lee prepared. Agent Lee was the agent that found the firearm and drug paraphernalia in the front room.
And those were turned over to deputies, is, is that your understanding?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Uh, and I'd like to you to return to tab two, which I believe you indicated was. The report you drafted?
Yes, sir.
Now, in, in this report, in the block there, under the case number, it says nature of complaint, and then. There's a number of, of statutes uh listed. Um, is this similar to um Agent Altazar's report? Where these are the statutes you allege have been violated by the Cajun Club?
Yes, sir.
So after, after your inspection concluded. What did you do next?
After the inspection, we, we confiscated all the liquor that was on the property receipts. We loaded that up into our vehicles, um, made sure that St. Croix Sheriff's deputies were. Completed with their investigation as well, and if they needed any assistance. Um, and then altogether as one unit, we left that location.
Yeah, have, have you been back to the Cajun Club or re-inspected the Cajun Club since September twenty-second?
I have not, no, I, we asked um. St. Croix County Sheriff's Office to just walk through or just check and make sure that the video gambling machines were removed. There was a ten day removal order for that. I believe that was complied with. And that was the only other um. Contact that I had with the uh Cajun Club. I did have contact with uh the Jacobsons. Uh, like I said, they had came, they had come to the Eau Claire office to turn over those uh invoices that were not on scene. Uh, we went through those invoices, and then I also had contact with Nicole when I returned uh. The twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five, thirty bottles of liquor to her. That were ultimately covered by those invoices. We met at a gas station over here in St. Croix County.
And at, at some point after your inspection, you made uh. The town of St. Joseph aware of the inspection and ultimately provided your reports and the reports of your agent, is that correct?
Yes.
And that ultimately led to the, the present proceeding, so um. Is there anything else you want the town board to be aware of with regard to uh the alleged violations? Or your inspection? Um, and that the board members might have questions for you. In addition, uh, the Jacobson's attorney might have some questions for you as well.
Yeah, um, it is one of our goals from the Department of Revenue to. Assist local municipalities in shutting down problematic uh establishments. And this would have been um through my questioning of Investigator O'Keefe, this was determined to be a problematic establishment. Um, a lot of times people believe that obtaining a liquor license or an alcohol license is a right. In Wisconsin, it, it is not. It is a privilege that is granted by you, the board. To give to the said business for them to operate in a legal and lawful manner. As which they were not. Um, in my discussions, um, when Nicole and Richard had arrived on scene. Um, it was evident that their manager. Um, was either not telling them what was going on or. They were not inquiring enough what was going on. They didn't have a good grasp of what was going on. They did not know that there was a. Weapons being discharged in their parking lot the weekend before. Um, they did not know about certain prostitution things and. Um, but for a business owner to, to not be aware of those things is, is not taking responsibility. For their liquor license and not running it the way that it should be done.
No, go ahead, Agent.
Boss track here, um. So with the inspection that we do. Um, when the Department of Revenue, Alcohol Tobacco Enforcement. When the Department of Revenue Alcohol Tobacco Enforcement Unit goes and does an inspection. When that inspection is denied or we're denied consent and we have to seek a inspection warrant. Their liquor license then ultimately becomes subject to revocation, just on that basis alone. Not even including the fact that all of the cases that I believe Investigator O'Keefe can discuss in further detail of. How many times St. Croix County Sheriff's Department has been to that establishment? And the manpower draw that, that, that one business has. Demanded from the sheriff's office to keep law and order and peace in the county.
Now, when you say that the denial. Of revenue agents requested inspection of a license premises can result in. A liquor license being revoked.
Yes, sir.
Is that Wisconsin law?
Yes, it is. So there's two aspects that we can go through that. One is, and the one we prefer to do. Is take that to the municipality that that occurred in. Because ultimately, you as the board are the ones that granted that license. We do not want to take that power away from you. We want to give you the opportunity to then, if you issued a license for you then to revoke said license, if they're not following the law. The other aspect that we avenue that we can do is we can seek through our attorneys at the Department of Revenue. And through the Department of Justice and seek a revocation on our own behalf. If that municipality was not willing to go towards or seek revocation of their license as well. Luckily enough, you as a board were willing to have this hearing. And ultimately determine whether or not you're going to keep or deny their, their license.
I mean, go. Any, I have no further questions. I would ask the board members if they have any.
I'll just start.
Yes.
In exhibit two, you've talked about this alcohol that you confiscated in this particular document. You wrote in here that you confiscated ninety-one bottles and then on the last page. You determined on October fifth. That you met her at the Travel Center in Hudson, Wisconsin, returned forty-one to her.
So that would be.
So you actually kept fifty that were not able to be proven. By receipt. Is that how I want to say it? You can.
By, by the invoices, correct. Yeah, if, yeah, I.
I know you're trying to do this quick. That's why I just wanted to clarify. This is what actually took place.
Correct, so. Yeah, so if you look at their reports, ninety-one bottles of liquor and twenty-five packets of cigarettes were confiscated as contraband. And then on October fifth, I met Nicole at the TA Travel Center in Hudson. And returned forty-one bottles of liquor and then it just goes through a detailed count of how many bottles and what brand of liquor that we returned to her.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have anything for him? Go ahead.
Your information is impeccable. I wanted to. Educate the board and myself on. If revocation occurs this evening. Is this? Indefinitely?
They could reapply and they'll ultimately be on, again, your. Vote if they were to get reissued the license. They could, I guess they could reapply. There's nothing in law that says they could not reapply if you revoked it.
Okay. I didn't know. I just wanted to.
No, no, that's fine.
Anyone else?
That was my question also. Does it have to go back to the state? After revocation or is it?
No, like I said, that's why we like to, as the Department of Revenue, we like to keep it at the local or municipalities level. We do not want to interfere. We want to interfere as least as possible with your guys' own municipality. We want you guys to make those decisions. So no, there would be nothing that if you guys were to vote. And were to revoke the liquor license. There would not, your clerk would have to, she has to report how many class B liquor licenses are issued. I believe she would have to send something to the Department of Revenue that says that this one has been revoked. And now there's one available within your township and anybody else now could apply for that said liquor license.
Else? Do you have any questions?
Yes. All right. Just a few questions. When you initially spoke to Mr. Jacobson, he indicated he was going to come to the premises?
He was. He said that he could be there in about hour, hour fifteen minutes.
When Richard and Nicole Jacobson showed up. Did they eventually get consent to the search after talking to you?
I don't recall. They might have, but at that point. When consent is given, then withdrawn, then given. At that point, I'm not going to. I'm going to be very cautious and the best route to go at that point is to get a warrant. So even if consent was given, that warrant process had already been started and we were going to see that warrant process through.
Okay, so even if consent was given, you were.
Yes, because I don't, I didn't want to give consent and then an hour into the inspection, then. Being told, well, you can't go in said or that room and now we have to go through the whole process again. So it was just quicker and. There's more standing for us to get a warrant and. It's just a stronger case for us just to seek the warrants, get the warrant and conduct the inspection with the warrant.
Were you informed of any dates that it was alleged St. Croix County was denied to inspect the Cajun Club?
I believe in speaking with Investigator O'Keefe, it was earlier this year between January and March. Some timeframe in there. I don't think he knew an exact dates and I wasn't expected. I didn't need to know an exact dates.
Were you made aware of how many occasions St. Croix County Sheriff's Office allowed to do license checks and come on the premises?
They could go there every single day if they chose to.
Were you made aware of when they did go there and?
I was not made aware. No, they, they do their own reports. They do their own documentation that we are not. Made aware of those instances.
With respect to the allegation of purchasing liquor from a liquor store and not a distributor. Mr. Jacobson denied doing that to you?
He did. Yes, I believe. Was my understanding that they own liquor stores in Minnesota. So I just wanted to ask the question of Richard if. They, he was purchasing his liquor in Minnesota through the liquor store and then bringing that liquor to the Cajun Club and he'd said he was not. So he said he was not, then that was, I was fine with that.
Okay, who told you that Mr. Jacobson currently owned liquor stores in Minnesota?
I believe he, he said he did or he still does. I couldn't remember. I don't recall specifically if he still does or he did. But I don't believe that some time that he either did or does own the liquor stores in Minnesota.
And you indicated approximately five liquor bottles were contaminated or fruit flies total in the establishment?
Yes.
And I believe you said that's not uncommon in establishments?
No, I said that is fairly common in establishments.
So fairly common in any establishment you go in generally?
Correct.
Are you aware of how many liquor bottles were open that could have been contaminated?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Oh, are you aware of how many liquor bottles were open that could have been subject to contamination?
I have no idea.
And with respect to the firearm that was found, are you aware that firearm was in a locked room?
Am I aware that it was in a locked room? I believe it was in a room in the front of the building. If you look at Agent Lee's report. Which is.
Exhibit seven.
Exhibit seven. He kind of talks about the location in which it was found. Room looked like a lounge type area for the employees. It kind of had a half step right from the inside front doors of the establishment. Investigator O'Keefe can go into much more detail on what was in there because there were a lot of alarming items that were found in that room as well. But ultimately, Agent Lee found a, and he specifically says it here, the gun was a loaded Desert Eagle forty-four Magnum pistol. Which I believe you should have pictures of. I don't know if you do. If you don't, I do have pictures of it. But it is a. Probably one of the largest handguns that are made in the world right now. It's about this big. And a forty-four Magnum like that is. One heck of a round to have in an establishment like that. It's a very scary thing for law enforcement and for the way that law enforcement had been treated at that establishment for them to have a gun. Like that. Being prior patrol deputy for seventeen years is kind of a scary thing to know that that gun is in that establishment like that. And that the way that especially DJ treated law enforcement.
And. Did you learn that firearm was properly registered at all or who it was registered to?
I do not know the specifics that ultimately was turned over to Investigator O'Keefe and his team.
And you just made the comment about how DJ had treated law enforcement. Was there concern about DJ? Or was there a concern about the Jacobsons?
Well, ultimately, the Jacobsons took response, take responsibility for DJ if he is their general manager. So yes, there was concerns with DJ. With his criminal activity and his status as a felon to find a firearm in that room. I guess, can you raise your question? I'm sorry.
I think you answered it. That's fine. And. In your conversations with St. Croix County, did they indicate? The Cajun Club itself or Myers GM Enterprises hadn't been issued any citations by St. Croix County recently?
I don't believe so. I'm not a hundred percent. Heck, I don't, I don't know, I guess.
You weren't really involved in the search or discovery of the alleged drug paraphernalia, correct?
I was not, no.
I believe you said there was rumors of illegal activity. Did you review any reports or how did you discover those rumors?
In speaking with Investigator O'Keefe, he had. Made indications that there was rumors or allegations that there was prostitution going on there. I do know that there prior was a RV or a camper parked in the back lot. If you look at just the optics of that, of a RV or camper parked in the back lot of a gentleman's club, what type of optics does that give? That there was prostitution happening in that camper, that there was prostitution on. Premise that there were drug activity going on. And after the fact, and I, Deputy Investigator O'Keefe can speak to this. He had reviewed hours and hours and hours of video surveillance from the club and had witnessed all of those activities. Illegal activities take place from sexual activities to the possession of the firearm, to the ingestion of. Drugs and drug pair, drugs on the premise. So I did not, I was told about the video. Investigator O'Keefe had witnessed that video and can probably speak into much further detail on that.
So your knowledge is just based upon what someone else had told you?
Yes, sir.
In the office identified as, I believe the owner's office, Richard, Nicole's office. Are you aware of anything illegal found in that office?
I am not.
You talked about having folders with certain distributors, having them in sequential order. That's not a requirement. It's just more of a recommendation.
No, that is the law that invoices need to be properly prepared in sequence and order and retained for two years.
And with respect to some of the. Liquor that was confiscated, I believe the approximately fifty bottles you said you kept. Some invoices were provided for those. They were just over two years old.
They were, they were, reason that those were kept was some of it is very popular liquor. And the invoices were up to six years old. So at that point, we did not release that liquor back to. Myers GM Enterprises.
Thank you. Just board, based on those questions, have any additional questions? Agent Robertson, thank you. With that, we'd invite Investigator Mike O'Keefe. So Investigator O'Keefe, can you tell us a little bit about your backgrounds? I understand you work for the St. Croix County Sheriff's Office. Can you tell us about your background and experience in law enforcement?
Sure. I'm a investigator for the St. Croix County Sheriff's Office, Sergeant of the St. Croix Valley Drug Task Force. Been in law enforcement for twelve and a half years. Specifically assigned to the Drug Task Force since January two thousand eighteen. Crime Suppression Unit, which is a proactive unit for roughly two years before that. And normal patrol operations prior to that.
Twelve years have they all been with St. Croix County?
No.
Where were you prior?
I've been an employee of St. Croix County since January of two thousand fourteen. I was currently employed by the Pittsburgh Police Department prior to that. My law enforcement career began in May of two thousand ten.
Okay, and do you have any education special to law enforcement?
Specifically, you.
Specific trainings with regard to the Drug Task Force, any, any degrees or certifications that you have?
Lots of training and certifications. I've had. Lots of drug training as far as identification, trafficking, overdoses. Hazmat related issues, lots of tactical training. I'm a scenario instructor, firearms instructor. I am hazmat certified. Lots of related training.
Do you have any, what is field testing for drugs?
Field testing is essentially a presumptive test of a suspected illegal drug. We carry many different types of drug tests in our, our kits, I guess you'd call it. It's used to give that initial identification of a suspected drug. Then that drug, in most cases, will be sent to a crime lab for positive identification.
Okay, and do you have training in conducting field testing?
Yes, I do.
And can you tell us, tell the board a little bit more about the St. Croix County Drug Task Force and your roles in?
The Drug Task Force, it's a three county, multi municipality drug task force. It covers Pierce, Polk and St. Croix. Essentially, just as at any task force, we work together. All the members specialize in drug investigations. And they all have, you know, unique training that would be directly directed towards drug investigations.
And you were present in the room for Agent Robertson's testimony, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and he described how. He and you came into contact. Can you provide the board a little background on that?
The, I think one thing that. Agent Robertson wasn't aware of is I was tasked with. As the continued complaints that were associated to the Cajun Club, I was tasked by my administration to. Look into how to address those complaints. My, I guess. Uh, majority of my investigations are dealing with individual people and private residences. To look into a business such as a Cajun Club wasn't something that was normal for me. So I reached out to uh Agent Al Cesar and asked him how to, you know, go about something like this. He assisted with me, assisted me getting in contact with the uh St. Joe Town Hall to look up licenses and. And that's where. Me and him didn't have communication until I met uh Agent Robertson.
Okay, and when, uh, about when did you first have your conversations with uh Agent Al Cesar about the uh Cajun Club?
Uh, specifically, I don't know if I were to guess, maybe June, Julyish. Maybe April, June.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay. And. And. Why did you reach out to the Department of Revenue about the Cajun Club specifically?
Just because I don't have a long history of, I don't have history of looking into businesses and how to. What would be the proper way to address something like that?
I think I meant more what drew your interest to the Cajun Club. Why were you?
Mainly, uh, it's been coming out throughout St. Croix County Sheriff's Office about the. Number of incidents uh that would occur there. Um, and notably, my administration tasked me with trying to figure out a way to address it.
And when you say number of of incidents, uh. Do you know the number of of incidents that you that you're talking about? What type of incidents are you talking about?
I have the uh. Prior to this evening, I had my dispatch look up the Cajun Club and the number of incidents. Um, it's my understanding they have the ability to uh search the name Cajun Club in their record system. And that was from May seventh of uh last year, twenty twenty-one. There was a hundred and three incidents until present.
And when we say incident, is that an emergency call? What is an incident?
So it, it could be anything. It could be a disturbance. It could be. Someone accidentally dialed nine one one, could be uh a broken down vehicle. It could be uh. Any, any type of incident. So it's not specific to something being positive or negative.
Would an incident be something that ultimately has to go through like an emergency dispatch?
Correct.
Okay, so a hundred and three. Incidents, hundred and three times that the Cajun Club was reported through some type of emergency dispatch.
Correct.
Alright. Relatively, are are you aware uh whether relatively speaking compared to other uh businesses or other businesses that have alcohol licensing? Whether in that time period, May twenty twenty-one to now, is a hundred and three incidents a lot?
I, yes, it is. I do, I don't have numbers from other establishments, but. Um, I believe that would be five plus incident or five plus incidents a month, which would be, that's a lot of incidents. There's many establishments that we don't ever respond to.
Now, Agent Robertson talked about a time where um uh St. Croix. County Sheriff's Officer Deputy uh was uh told to leave the premises of the Cajun Club. Are you aware of that incident?
I am.
Uh, can you tell the board about it?
Um, so I was made aware of that incident. Uh, one of our, uh, actually a patrol sergeant. Uh, I believe he observed what he thought was persons uh inside the Cajun Club after hours. He went inside the Cajun Club um. And I reviewed his body camera. He was immediately met with resistance, a person shouting. Um, essentially harassing him and another deputy. He was trying to uh. Identify and check the license of the bartender. Um, she would not identify herself. She had a document. I don't know if it was hanging on the wall or not, but. She quickly flashed it to him. And then when he tried to read the document, she would pull the document back. I, he believed, he tried, attempted to uh. Get a license from the manager Dominic Tar dive. I don't believe that license was uh displayed at all. And essentially, as Agent Robertson said, that deputy, the the situation. Uh escalated very quickly. The patrons were shouting at the deputies. I believe at that time, the deputies decided instead of escalating the situation into. Uh, much worse altercation, they decided to leave. Um, the patrons followed the deputies continuing to yell and harass them all the way out the door. Uh, this incident was also uh recorded by Dominic Tar dive, the manager. I also reviewed that video.
Okay, now. I believe I heard you say the patrons of the Cajun Club were shouting at the deputy who was present. Were the Jacobsons there doing this?
No, they were not.
Alright, were any employees doing this?
Patron may not have been the the best word. Um, the person said, so was Dominic Tar dive. A female that appeared to be a bartender. Uh, I believe an individual that I recognized to be uh. Another known person that I do not have knowledge if he worked at the Cajun or not. His name was Mark Murphy. I know that he resided across the street from the Cajun Club. Um, I've dealt with him in many criminal investigations prior to the Cajun Club incident. Um, another individual. Uh, stated that he was an employee as well. I don't recall his name. I. Believe that may have been some quick thinking on his part that he knew that he couldn't be in there after hours and said that he was an employee.
Alright, and um. Who is, who is Dominic?
To my knowledge, he's the manager at the Cajun Club.
Um, were you present on uh September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two when uh the. Agents from the Department of Revenue attempted to inspect the premises?
Yes, I was.
Alright, prior to that date, had you ever been uh on site at the Cajun Club?
I have.
Uh, and. Have you tried to conduct an inspection prior to September twenty-second of the Cajun Club?
Not me personally, no.
Okay. Are you aware of any other time where a sheriff's officer, other than the one incident you described, was met with? Resistance, I believe was your term in conducting a lawful inspection of the club?
I don't.
Are you aware of times where the sheriff's uh sheriff's deputies have been able to successfully inspect the Cajun Club? Prior to uh September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two?
It's possible, but I don't have that knowledge.
Okay. So, leading up to um. September twenty-second, um. Did you have uh conversations about how the inspection was going to be conducted with the Department of Revenue?
Yes.
And. You said you were on site for that inspection?
Correct.
And uh. Did you enter the Cajun Club with the revenue agents?
I did.
Alright. And. Did you proceed to conduct an inspection?
The role of the St. Croix County deputies was more or less for safety and. To potentially deal with any criminal issues that may have arose.
So you were there to ensure the safety of the revenue agents, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, at some point during the inspection. Uh, Agent Robertson. Said that a gun and drug paraphernalia were found. Are you aware of that?
I am.
Can you tell us about that?
Agent Lee from the Department of Revenue. Uh, he began his inspection in, I agree with Agent Robertson. Was what I would describe as a type of lounge room for bouncers. Um, or any employee for that matter. Um, Agent Lee first discovered the Desert Eagle uh pistol. The pistol, the the magazine of the pistol was loaded and inserted. The slide of the pistol was locked to the rear. That would mean that one would just need to hit the slide release and the firearm would be loaded and ready to operate. Quickly after, soon after, he uh rendered that pistol safe. He located a uh what I recognize to be called a hot rail. This is a. A device that's used to ingest methamphetamine. And at that point, um. I began to uh relay that drug paraphernalia was found and that I. Uh, that the search should stop and a search warrant should be applied for.
Uh, now, at that time, did you leave the premises to apply for a search warrant?
No.
What, what happened next then?
Um. The search was ceased. Uh, law enforcement uh maintained control of the facility. I applied for and was granted the search warrant right in the parking lot of the Cajun Club.
What happened to the gun and what I believe you called a hot rail after they were secured and detected?
Uh, so the, the, the gun was uh secured by law enforcement, the hot rail. I tested that with the NarTech Incorporated. That's the brand name, uh, methamphetamine test. And it tested positive for methamphetamine. That piece of paraphernalia was also taken uh as evidence at that time.
And that test, uh, what'd you call it, Nar?
It's called NarTech is the, the brand of it and. They make a, a different test that's specific for each drug. Uh, since I recognize the device as being a common methamphetamine device, that's a test that I utilized.
And you have prior experience using that test?
Yes, I do.
So you indicated that you applied for a search warrant in the parking lot of the Cajun Club and I believe you said that was granted?
Yes.
What happened next?
Uh, the search of the premises commenced.
And how many uh sheriff's deputies were were present there assisting you in a search?
Seven to ten, maybe.
And did the search occur at the same time that the revenue agents were conducting their uh. License premises inspection that they were granted a inspection warrant for?
Correct.
So during the course. Of executing your search warrant, uh, did you uncover anything else that was of concern to you?
Yes, uh, I personally searched the, the, I guess we could refer to it as the lounge room. Um, I located multiple additional pieces of paraphernalia. Uh, that were specific to methamphetamine, marijuana and cocaine. I also located a crystal substance that tested positive for methamphetamine.
Where did you locate that substance?
It was on a shelf. It would have been along the uh west wall.
Were you able to determine whether or not anyone who was on the premises uh owned that substance?
So, uh, also during that evening, I uh seized the cell phone of Dominic Tar dive. I applied for a search warrant for that cell phone. And I, uh, while searching that cell phone, I observed that it appeared he installed. Uh, some type of camera of his own in that lounge room. Um, reviewing video. From his own camera, I observed that him, that he was smoking a uh a methamphetamine style pipe in that room. So I suspected that that methamphetamine was Dominic Tar dive's.
Were you able to determine from the video whether or not that um. Was it called a hot rail? Whether that was the device that he was using?
No, the uh, we, we did saw a. Uh, a methamphetamine style pipe. It's got what is referred to as a stem and a bubble. Um, that was the type of device that Mr. Tar dive was using. We also located a, a smoking device like that in that room as well.
Did you test that device?
Yes, I did.
And what were the results of that?
Positive for methamphetamine.
On the video that uh you've discussed, did you see anybody else in the video? That you believe was using drugs on the premises?
The same individual, Mark Murphy, that was observed in the video. There was a video of him, a separate video of him and Dominic Tar dive using methamphetamine.
Yeah, the room has been described both by you and Agent Robertson as a lounge area. Uh, is, is the room locked?
To my knowledge, it was not locked.
Alright, were there doors on?
Yes.
Okay. So did you have to walk through a door that would close in order to get into the lounge?
Correct. Agent Lee was the first one in that room, so I, I don't believe it was locked, but he would, I guess, have that knowledge.
So you've indicated uh. Your search, you uh. The Sheriff's Office found a substance that field tested positive for methamphetamine and drug paraphernalia. And drug paraphernalia that field tests positive for methamphetamine. Did your search uncover any, anything else?
Um. Yes, uh, there was another firearm located in uh. I located a, a, a list of what each camera was. There was, I think, thirty. Three cameras or something in the facility. One of the cameras was uh. Uh, labeled as Dominic's office or Dom DJ's office, I believe. Um, and that would have been in, so the lounge room would have been to the right when you entered. Dominic, the room that was identified as DJ's office would have been to the left. There was an additional firearm located in, in uh, uh, that office. And I think it was loaded in the same manner the magazine was loaded, but the chamber was empty.
So two ir- firearms were found?
Correct.
In total?
Yes. There were additional firearm parts that were located, but not full firearms.
When you say parts, what do you mean?
Um, there was a. A decent amount of ammunition that was located. There was a, a slide to a nineteen eleven style pistol. That was located as well. The top portion of a pistol is. Essentially a part, the lower part of the pistol is what is considered to be the actual firearm.
Was it, were any other drugs found on site or I should say controlled substances?
Yes.
What were they?
I think six or seven of the dancers had um. Marijuana or paraphernalia. One in particular uh had inserted a. Uh, methamphetamine smoking device inside of her. Uh, she later disclosed that she had this device in her and. Uh, cooperated with law enforcement and turned that device over. Uh, she also had, I believe it was oxycodone, which is a Schedule Two drug, which is a felony.
Did she have a prescription for it?
No, she did not. She also had uh empty baggies that had methamphetamine residue in them.
Now, Agent Robertson testified at some point, the, the owners of uh the Cajun Club, the Jacobson showed up. Did you have any interactions with them at the scene?
Not a lot. Uh, I was pretty much, I stood by for the most part when they were out there.
Okay. And. What did you do? Um, is there anything else we should know about your search?
Um, I did uh seize a camera system. Uh, that was for the Cajun Club, just a notable. Uh, video on there was Dominic Tar dive, who is a convicted felon. Uh, was handling the uh Desert Eagle pistol in that office that was labeled as DJ's office.
Are you aware whether or not Dominic had a, a license to serve alcohol?
I'm not aware.
So after, uh, after the search was conducted, um, to the extent that you're able to tell us. Has uh, has there been any uh criminal charges that have arisen out of this?
Yes.
Are you able to tell us who's been charged?
If I can refer to my notes, um, I do have charges referred on Richard Jacobson, Dominic Tar dive. Uh, the remainder of the names, I would have to refer to my notes.
And this is arising out of September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
And none of those court cases would be complete at this point?
To my knowledge, I checked today. I don't believe anything's been filed.
Filed, so no charges have been filed?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I do have firsthand knowledge that the, the district attorney will be filing charges.
Agent Robertson talked about an incident that occurred prior to September twenty second, twenty twenty two, where there was a gunshot fired reportedly in the parking lot of the Cajun Club. Are you aware of that incident?
Yes.
Can you tell the board about it?
I don't have all the knowledge on the incident. There was some type of disturbance. People were unsure who fired. There were some vehicles that were identified, but I was suspected that someone fired an AR fifteen in the parking lot into the air.
Were there any bullets found or casings or anything that would be indicative of, of an AR fifteen being filed or fired?
Not that I found. I did, in that lounge room, I did locate a rifle case that had AR fifteen magazines. Or, yeah, magazines, what you would load your ammunition into.
Have you personally ever had to go to the Cajun Club and make an arrest?
Since I'm, I'm not on patrol, that wouldn't particularly be something that I would do. So I don't believe so often.
Are you aware whether other people in the St. Croix Sheriff's Office have in the past twelve months had to make arrests at the Cajun Club?
Yes.
Are you aware what the arrests were for?
Yes.
Can you tell the board?
It's, to my knowledge, there's been multiple arrests that have ranged from drugs, people illegally possessing firearms, wanted subjects, disturbances.
I believe Agent Robertson referred to what he called, what I believe he called rumors about prostitution. Have there been any arrests made related to prostitution at the Cajun Club?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there anything else that you believe the board should know about the search that you conducted on September twenty second of this year? Or about this St. Croix County Sheriff's Office interactions with the Cajun Club?
I don't believe so.
With that, I'll turn it over to the chair.
My only question since Mr. Roberts brought it up was, even though you have not known of any arrests for prostitution, was there anything in that building or around that building that would lead you to believe that that was an activity that was going on?
I don't have firsthand knowledge of it. I did review video of what was labeled as a VIP room. I think there was some touching that would probably go further than a lap dance. I don't know if, you know, if it was specifically, you know, exchanged this for that or so I can't firsthand call it prostitution. I do know Mr. Tardive had a conversation with one of the dancers where she tells him that she is an escort. I don't know if that activity took place on the grounds of the Cajun or someplace else.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I do have one more question. Could you turn to the tab marked number nine in that packet? And look through it?
Any report in particular?
Well, I'd like you to tell me what these, what these are.
Okay. It would appear that these are reports from the search warrant conducted on September twenty second.
And if you turn to page three at the bottom, there's in bold, it says supplemental narrative by Michael O'Keefe, nine twenty nine, twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Is that your supplemental narrative?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you, investigator. I'd ask the counsel, is any?
I do have, I do. What, what are the rights to having a gun? I mean, they
Specifically not to be a convicted felon, I guess, is where it comes to my portion of that.
And I do have a question on page eight about this particular handgun case that had a Stillwater Police Evidence sticker on that. That's the Taurus three eighty handgun. It doesn't give the serial number. It says the owner was labeled as Dominic. What is that about?
So to my knowledge, Mr. Tardive had two previous felon in possession of a firearm cases. Also that involved possession of methamphetamine. I believe the Stillwater may have been the first incident where they took that firearm and maybe released it back to him or released the box itself without the firearm. I don't know all of the information on that.
Agent, Agent Robertson, I believe, referred to Mr. Tardif, is it?
Tardive.
Tard. As a felon, is he a felon?
Yes, he is.
Anything else? Anything else from anyone on the board? Then, sir, we'll let you come up to the microphone again.
You'd mentioned, oh, sorry, you'd mentioned charges referred up, were referred up to the DA's office for multiple people, correct?
Correct.
One of those was Mr. Jacobson indicated?
Correct.
What charges were referred there?
That would be for the refilling.
Oh, the refilling of the liquor bottles?
Correct.
Okay. And your main involvement was in any potential criminal activity?
Correct.
And you didn't have, to the best of your recollection, any in-depth conversations with Richard Nicole Jacobson?
I did not. I mean, there was some small talk when they first arrived, but nothing interview or anything related to that.
Had you ever previously talked to the Jacobsons?
I have not.
Okay. You indicated there was some previous complaints regarding the Cajun Club. Do you know if anyone talked to the Jacobsons about those complaints?
I do not.
And you indicated the hundred and three incidents would have been from mid last year till now?
May seventh of twenty twenty one to present.
Okay. But you can't speak to what those actually were for. It's just something Cajun Club showed up on them?
Correct.
Did you search any other establishments in State Croix County for complaints in that timeframe?
No, I did not.
In the one previous incident you testified where the deputy left and was met with resistance, the Jacobsons were not present at that time?
Not to my knowledge.
And are you aware of any inspections that were allowed in the previous year at the Cajun Club?
I am not.
With respect to the alleged illegal items you found, none of those were found in what would have been the owner's office?
I believe those prescription pill bottle that they weren't able to identify to anyone that was taken from that office other than that the security system, but I don't recall any other items that were seized from that office.
Were people actually arrested that night, the September twenty second?
No. Well, there was one dancer that had the smoking device in her. She was more or less taken to the jail because we can scan a person to make sure that there's nothing of other contraband inside her. More or less for safety purposes for her. Once she was at the jail, I instructed the deputy to release her.
So other than that person, no other persons were formally arrested that night?
Correct. The, the reason behind that is because of the totality of the investigation. If someone were in custody, it wouldn't allow the time that's needed to properly sort through evidence and prepare reports.
Anyone else on the board? For anything else before he leaves the table? Go ahead.
Mr. O'Keefe, Attorney Hugelson asked in reference to the one hundred and three complaints for the Cajun Club, he wanted to inquire if you searched any other establishments in St. Croix County to which you responded no, correct?
Correct.
Did you, did you search for complaints against any other establishments in the town of St. Joseph?
I did not.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Back to you.
Oh, thank you. And so next, you're certainly not required to, but both of you do have the opportunity to, to speak and address the board. And I don't know if your attorney wants to ask questions or if you want to make a statement, we would leave that to, to you.
I think I'll allow her to make a statement and follow up with questions.
Yeah, I'm going to go to the microphone and sit at the table.
I'll stand, thank you.
And just pull that up so it's within three inches. Thank you. All right. I just want to start by saying, thank you for your questions. I think they've been very thorough and shame on you, Mr. Robertson, and you, shame on you guys. They, they know they have not fully told the truth. The reason that they did come to the Cajun Club, which all it would have taken was one phone call to Rich and I, but they had not done that. And the reason that they came to the Cajun Club, I was specifically told by you, correct? When we met at the gas station, did you not tell me that the reason they were there and the reason they called you to back them up was because of DJ? You told me that. All right, he did tell me that. He told me that was the reason that they were coming after us. One phone call would have helped. September twenty second, Rich received a call from our manager, DJ at that time, which is no longer a manager. From, that, that was the sheriff's department and they wanted to search the building. We asked at that, that time that they wait till we arrived. I called back the number and asked who I was speaking with, and I was told I don't need to know and I will find out when I get there. When we arrived, my husband went into the building and I asked the officer out front who they were at that time. They would not identify themselves. As far as I was able to tell, it was the sheriff's department. I asked them to get a search warrant. At that point, Mr. Robertson identified himself as ATF. I told him that was no problem. He could go in. I know that he is allowed to inspect our liquor. And told me, since I had already said no to the sheriff's office entering, and I was not allowed to tell him, he could not enter. He would not take, that he would take our license away and have me arrested. Again, I told him, we have no problem with ATF entering the building, only the sheriff's department because of the constant harassment. He refused to enter and said he was going to get a warrant. I told him that was not necessary and that we are more than happy to have him in and would get him the information he needed. He proceeded to get a warrant and continued to tell me he would take away our license and have me arrested. He already had our manager at that time, DJ, handcuffed and detained. During the bullet points, I'm just going to go through here real quick. The sheriff's department had already entered the building and started searching. And did not ask any time for our liquor license. They were there with the backup just to search. The doors were locked where the guns or whatever else they had found. We are not aware of paraphernalia. We don't allow that. We have zero tolerance. That is not something we can tell. We do have the invoices at that building passed till two thousand sixteen. I am a liquor license holder and I was not allowed in the building to provide the information needed. All documents are located in Rich and my office. No one has access to that office. So therefore DJ or anyone else could not give him access to that office at that time. A few hours later, after the search was finishing, they let me in the building. I asked what invoices they did need and went to my office to retrieve them. I brought them to Mr. Robertson and was told he had been there long enough and was not going to look at any more invoices. Going on to Rich purchasing liquor from anywhere else? No, we purchased from our distributors, period. We previously owned liquor stores in the past, yes, but do not now and know the laws and do not buy from anyone else. All licenses are on site. We have had the sheriff's department there multiple times. I have multiple videos of them coming in at all times, asking for everybody's baggies, asking to see the bartender's license, the liquor licenses. We have provided them with that multiple times. Multiple times. Yes. Duran Trace, Chase, or Chase Duran officer had come in multiple times. After the third time of him coming in, I did give him a call and asked him what I can do for him because he's seen the licenses. He knows we have the licenses. Is there anything else I can help him with or please let me know? He said, no, he is going to come into our building as many times as he wants because he can. I'm getting a little off track here, but I'm not too happy with them and what they had said because this is just untrue. To my knowledge, no one was arrested that evening. And we were not told of any employee whatsoever having any possession of any narcotics or anything illegal on them. Or the firearms that were found were registered in locked and secure areas. As far as I know, it's not illegal to own a registered firearm. And many of our owners do keep firearms on hand. We did not have anything in our office. I have personally been more than willing to help in any investigation the sheriff's department has asked of. I have multiple times helped with cases not associated with our club because at our club, we have not received any notification whatsoever of any reports. And hearing there's a hundred and some is just obnoxious to me that nobody informed the owners of the business that this was happening. In any way, we have not received any tickets or anything, no notification. I've upgraded our whole tear camera system because of the fact that I've been asked so many times to provide it. And when I cannot provide something because it's not recorded on our current system, they are upset with me because I can't provide it for them. They have taken our camera system, the upgraded system, the DVR that we had purchased to help out in anything and make sure that we have the correct footage if needed. They have taken this and not returned it since September twenty second. I don't think that we have. Really taken. Anything out of this Cajun Club that we, we've done a great job. It's my husband and I who run this. And yes, we did have someone who. Was managing the place that we were unaware of these things happening. And yes, a phone call from someone may have helped us out and may have helped our business out. And I apologize for that. That's all I have.
If you could come forward so we could record it.
Be really brief. You touched on it, but your policy as owners of this business, do you have any tolerance?
We have zero tolerance, zero.
Drug use or anything?
Absolutely none.
And you inform them of that?
Absolutely.
Just slow down. Prior to anyone becoming an independent contractor, employee, anything like that, you inform them of your zero tolerance policy?
Correct.
And if you learn of it, they're no longer employed there?
Correct.
We've heard a lot about this lounge room they're describing. Can you just describe it for me so everyone kind of knows what it is?
It's a storage closet.
Employees have access to it?
They should not have, no.
Okay. Is it supposed to remain locked?
Correct. It's always locked.
Okay. And you indicated it, but this DJ or Dominic has not been an employee of yours for quite some time now?
Correct.
All right. Since shortly after the September twenty second?
Yes.
Okay.
Jacobson, can I ask you a few questions?
Yes.
Other than Dominic, I have trouble with his last name. So other than Dominic, have you terminated anybody else's employment after September twenty second, twenty twenty two?
No.
Okay. Agent Robertson's report and testimony indicated that they about ninety. Liquor bottles were confiscated on September twenty second. Would, would you agree with that?
I was outside most of the time, so I do not know what he had taken out of there.
Okay. Do you believe that your inventory was short about ninety bottles after that day?
Yes, a lot of that was older things that we just didn't go through or that we had a larger inventory that takes quite a while to go through. So those bottles were. Probably more than two years old.
Okay.
And we did provide invoices, but they did not accept those.
Okay, so you provided. You, you received forty one bottles back, is that correct? Okay. And are you saying you provided invoices for all of the liquor bottles and only forty one were accepted?
I would say probably not all.
Okay.
I think there was some fruity stuff. Yeah, stuff that the previous owner had there that we just really didn't even have out. They were in our back room and. I don't think anyone would drink it anyway, so.
All right. And do you have any reaction to the statements that substances and paraphernalia that field tested positive for methamphetamine were found on the site?
We are unaware of any of that. I, I was not there during that time. When they did initially start the search without the warrant, we were not there.
How often are you or Mr. Jacobson on the premises?
My husband's there every day. I'm there every other week, every Wednesday. I'm there. Once in a while I do a lot of the cleaning and painting and, and things like that.
Okay. So I am.
Before you leave, yeah. Um, in this report. It states that there was a conversation regarding the refilling of this Jack Daniels. And that your husband admitted to the agent that he does refill the smaller bottle from the larger.
That's false.
Why would he say that?
Why would my husband say that? He wouldn't. That's.
Why would there be a funnel there with the one point seven five bottle?
That we do not know.
Okay.
We did have to purchase the larger bottles because during COVID, they didn't have the liter bottles. So. Our only guess on that would be that an employee did that because she didn't want to lift the larger bottle all night long of Jack Daniels. But we did not authorize that. We do not allow that.
And there was much discussion from Mr. Roberts about this inspection that was taking place that was stopped. And he introduced himself to Richard and Richard denied them consent to conduct the inspection. He asked it again. He was denied. And that precipitated them going for the search warrant.
That's incorrect.
So why would you think they would go for a search warrant if they would have been told yes?
I, like I said in my statement, when we got there. He finally let me know who he was and I said, we have no problem with you entering. Just the sheriff's department, we would like to have them get a warrant. He then refused at that time and said, no, I'm going to get a warrant. And I said, there is no need for that. And he said, then I can take away your liquor license and have you arrested.
But this interaction took place prior to there.
No, he, he, he was wrong. That's why I said shame on him for saying that because that did not take place until I arrived. I was in the front of the building. I was speaking to him. My husband was inside the building. He specifically told me who he was. And at that time I said, you are more than willing to go in the building.
Anyone else? I have two brief questions. You stated. You stated that you have a zero tolerance policy?
Yes.
And as a part of your zero tolerance policy, do you random drug test?
No, we do not.
Could you state your business hours for me?
Uh, we are open five AM till two AM and on weekends until two thirty.
Five AM to?
I'm sorry, five PM till two AM.
And that's what, Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, Saturday, or Friday and Saturday, we're open until two thirty AM.
Sunday?
Sunday, five PM till two AM.
Back to that, okay?
Yep.
While. All of this activity was going on. Was your business still operating and serving patrons at that same time?
As what was going on? I'm sorry.
As during these, during these searches and?
Uh, though they, um, I'm not sure what they had done. The customers were no longer there when we arrived. As far as I know, I was outside the building. Um, there may have been some that they held inside. I'm, I'm not aware. Um, we did reopen immediately after they left and they were fine with that. They, they, no arrests were made and they said we can reopen immediately. And we did.
All right. Thank you.
How long was Dominic employed there?
I would have to ask, I don't eat. Two, two years ish. Only possibly ten months, nine months managing. Yeah, maybe a year managing.
And he evolved into a management position because?
We had lost our manager before that. She went through a different career.
And listening to all this. It kind of paints a picture of an absent owner where he. Lost his leash. As a manager.
Probably true. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna stop a second. Either you're gonna answer it or he's gonna come to the microphone. Okay, one of the two.
I'm done with my questions. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess yes. I don't think the past year, yes, I have taken off. Some time to take care of the kids. So we just had a kid going to college and another one entering, you know, middle school. There's a lot of sports going on and I did take the time. We have. Three llamas, six cats, two dogs, two kids. And a large house. So I did leave it up to my husband to take care of the business for the past year.
You had another question? Go ahead and bring, bring your microphone up. My last question goes back, this is a Dominique, I presume, question also. So there's speaking about the lounge area, which you referred to as the storage area, which it was stated. The lot, the, the area was unlocked and you stated, no, that the area is kept locked. Now it kind of fussy here. Is it locked? Is it, should it be locked during business hours?
It should always be locked and it should not have been used.
As with Dominique being your manager, was it likely that? Dominique either had the keys, would know where the keys were. Or. Would have had the door unlocked without your permission?
He did unlock the door without our permission.
So he in fact had access to what it, wherever the keys were?
Uh, no, I believe he broke in and changed the lock on us.
Okay.
It's a closet. We don't look. It's a storage room that I don't use.
So until that night, you didn't know that that room was no longer locked?
As far as I know, it's always locked.
Okay, thank you. There were over thirty, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
How long after September twenty second was Dominic let go?
I can't tell you the exact date.
If I was you, I would know that date. It'd be a very important date to me. Cause you hired a convicted criminal.
As far as I know, he didn't have, he was not a felony that I knew of. And no, I did not do a background search.
That's. Okay. And, and your current manager has come from where and what do you know about your current manager?
Our current manager has worked for my husband for twenty eight years in several of his businesses. And I do know a lot about him. He's a very good man.
When you say you have a zero tolerance in this establishment. I just did a quick count of the number of drugs or drug paraphernalia. And firearms and ammunition. And there's over thirty five instances here that they confiscated or tested. That's a lot. And if you're telling me you have zero tolerance, why would there be that quantity? Of those types of devices and things in that building?
I do not know.
Okay, anything from anyone else here? Where did you want to go with this next?
Mr. Jacobson, you may not want to, but you have the opportunity to address the board if you want. All right, counsel, would you like to address the board?
Yeah.
Less argument, more just any statements you'd like to make, yeah?
I'll try. Obviously I don't have any personal knowledge of it's more just kind of outlining what I've heard here today. Cause obviously these move that up. These move at a very fast pace. Obviously by statute, you had to hold the hearing within three to 10 days. So, you know, we didn't have the benefit of. Reviewing things, doing what we would call discovery, things like that, um, which, you know. Uh, normally in a, in other cases, we'd have that opportunity, but kind of from, uh, you know, what I've heard here today, I think there's a lot of. Hearsay, the word rumors used. I don't think, you know, we should be relying on. What someone else told someone or what a rumor is and really focus on, you know, what mayor may not be the evidence here. Um, you know, there's been nothing that there's ever been a violation at this place while the Jacobsons have owned it, uh, I believe, as Jacobson said, since twenty sixteen. So we have no history of any sort of violations. And as she said, and I think the officer said, no one really talked to them about this. I mean, this. Um, could have been something where, you know, conversation could have been had. You know, I've, I am a city attorney. I've had those conversations with liquor license holders to just. If there's an issue, let's try and get to the heart of the problem. Um, I get sometimes law enforcement doesn't want to do that because they have an investigation. And that's legitimate, but I think, you know, some of these things could have been resolved with. Um, you know, a conversation, I think the complaint alludes to, they gave St. Craig County. Problems in the past and that was one of the reasons. I think testimony here today was one time there was some resistance. It wasn't the Jacobsons that did that. Uh, once again, if law enforcement could tell them, um, obviously employees should too. Uh, you know, so they can try and fix the problem in their establishment. Um. And, um, I think Agent Robertson said, you know, uh, even there may have been conflicting consent, um. And they were gonna seek the warrant. I think the Jacobsons wanted to be there. That's why they came there, um, then. Gave consent according to them. And I believe, uh, there was some conflicting, so they just pursued that, um, inspection warrants. And so there's nothing illegal in the owner's office. Um, I think a lot of the problems, um. May have been with an employee, uh, who's no longer there. Um. You know, it would be interesting to see what other establishments in St. Joel's or St. Craig County, anytime they've been mentioned in an incident. That is any call. Um, you know, I think unfortunately, some establishments, uh, people that are, um. You know, drinking or in liquor establishments, uh, in today's day and age, you're probably going to find drugs on some people. Um, just given the nature of especially with THC, uh, how common people think it's legal, even though it is illegal. And so I think, um. You know, the evidence presented, I just want the board to focus on what's actual fact. Um, there wasn't an outright denial. Um. You know, they, once they realized who these people were, um, they allowed consent. They've allowed consent in the past. Um, they're not here to cause issues with law enforcement. They indicated they've cooperated with law enforcement, even when it doesn't involve their establishment. Something else they want video, um, they turn over the video, um, and have cooperated with law enforcement in that way. Um, and so, um, I think there are questions posed by the board, you know, about revocation. I would. Um, ask the board to look specifically at the statute. Your only option is revocation here. Um, if you don't find it rises to any level, um, you know, there, no action can be taken, but also in Wisconsin statute one twenty five point one two, it talks about. Um, you know, possible suspension. Obviously we oppose any suspension too. But, um, this isn't a case where the board doesn't have multiple options here. And so. We asked the board to consider this is the first time, um, in six years or more, um, that. Uh, the, or the establishment have had any issue. They've issued, been issued no citations. They've never. Uh, been issued any reprimand with respect to their liquor license and allow them to keep the liquor license. Um. They'd be happy to have conversations with the town on, you know, conditions or the things they won't put in. Um, you know, to avoid future defects, they. Future issues if they may arise in the future. So I think, um, not revoking and maybe having some of those conversations if. Uh, or, uh, believe there, you know, believe it's another six months till they're up for renewal. At that point, the board also can, you know. Put conditions or, you know, have those conversations between now and then. Um, to allow them to keep running an establishment that, um, pays its taxes, hasn't had any issues. So. I just wanted to make those statements and, uh, hope that the board doesn't just issue a revocation and allows them, um, to correct any errors the board sees. And ask them to allow them to continue to be in business, uh, have their livelihood. So, um, thanks for allowing me to speak.
Did you want to say something?
Thank you. I, um, Chair Johnson, I think I just want to talk about next steps and the decision that is before the board at this time. So, uh, before the board, uh, is a draft of a resolution. This resolution is drafted as, uh, revoking, uh, both of the liquor license that have been. Issued to the Cajun Club. Uh, the resolution was, um, you know, drafted based on the complaint. Obviously the board has received testimony from, um, investigator O'Keefe. Agent Robertson and, uh, the registered agent for the business Nicole Jacobson at this time and heard, um. Our, argument from, from counsel. Uh, it's correct that there are really three decisions before the board at this time. It's correct that there are really three decisions before the board at this time. One is do nothing. Two is issue a suspension for a period of time for this liquor license, these liquor licenses. And the third option is is revocation. Based on the reports and the testimony we've we've heard tonight, I do want to call attention to a couple of items that were included in the complaint that I think have been changed here. The first is we'd have to note that Nicole and Richard Jacobson were were present at this and represented by counsel. So we would be adding that to the recitals. Second thing, under the conclusions of law, conclusion of law, proposed conclusion of law, one B, that says statute, chapter one twenty five, has been violated by failing to display Cajun Club alcohol licenses. And this is a suggestion. The board can do whatever it wants. But I I believe from Agent Robertson's testimony, I don't think that was of paramount concern to the to the Department of Revenue because he stated he knew that they had a valid license at the time. With regard to one D, possessing intoxicating liquor with with substances in violation of Wisconsin statute one twenty five point six eight parent nine. The board heard testimony that those related to about five alcohol bottles that had fruit flies in them. So the board would have to consider what it wants to do with a finding based on Agent Robertson's testimony, that that's not uncommon at establishments. Finally, based on the testimony of Ms. Jacobson, Deputy O'Keefe and Agent Robertson, the parent three A, the last sentence or the last clause there, repeated need for law enforcement to respond to the present premises. I believe that should be revised to repeated incident reports arising from the premises. So with that, the board should debate the information in the complaint, the report and the testimony provided by the witnesses and and make a decision about what it wants to do with regard to the liquor licenses with the Cajun Club.
Can I ask you to come back to one thing? On three A, what did you just say? I wasn't clear about that.
There's, based on the, based on the complaint, it says the licensee isn't violated Wisconsin statutes one twenty five by maintaining the disorderly indecent or proper improper house, which is demonstrated by, and one of the points is the repeated need for law enforcement to respond to premises. I don't believe that was the testimony, but we did hear testimony that there are repeated incident reports arising from the premises.
Okay. You have to, you have to turn on. So on three A, like going back to that, the last sentence is the only correction you would make. You would take off and the repeatedly?
The these, these are things that I noticed. It's it's up for the board to to consider what you think the appropriate findings are. But I believe the incident reports were what was testified to.
Anyone else want to discuss this? Where do you want to go with this?
But I I have one more question.
Sure.
Attorney Nelson, one B. The failing to display its alcohol license. I understand that is in violation of the statute as stated. And you said that that was a suggestion. What was the suggestion? They?
Removing it.
Portion was what your, your advice, okay?
As a point of discussion, does anyone want to make a motion on this so we can discuss this resolution? If that's the direction we want to go or what?
I don't, myself, I don't know what the verbiage for the motion would need to be in order for, based on your commentary.
You would make a motion to approve this motion and you or this resolution and you would read it?
Read it into the minute.
Yes.
Then that would be the first step to go into discussion.
Right, because then we'd have a second and then we go into discussion. So is everyone in the room clear on what's gonna happen?
Are we reading this in its entirety?
Yes.
Okay, may I, may I do it? And then then you can move it based on the fact that I'm I'm adding a clause on it?
Thank you.
All right. So proposed resolution twenty 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 two seventeen, a resolution revoking the class B and class B retail licenses for Myers GM Enterprises Inc., DBA Cajun Club licensee. Recitals, whereas Myers GM Enterprises Inc., DBA Cajun Club, hereafter referred to as the licensee, holds a class B fermented malt beverages license and a class B retail intoxicating liquor license issued by the town of St. Joseph, hereafter referred to as the town. Whereas the town received a sworn complaint by a town resident pursuant to Wisconsin statute section one twenty five point one two, parent two, which alleges licensee has violated provisions of state of Wisconsin statutes and town of St. Joseph ordinance is regarding alcohol licensure. Whereas the complaint is based on reports seen from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue Special Agents and the St. Croix County Sheriff's deputies who executed a search warrant and an inspection warrant at the licensee's premises on September twenty second, twenty twenty two. Whereas the licensee was duly served a summons and complaint in accordance with Wisconsin statute section one twenty five point one two, parent A, parent AR, to appear before the town board at six PM on December thirteen, twenty twenty two to address whether licensee's class B license, class B and class B retail licenses should be suspended or revoked. Whereas at the meeting of the town board, license, the the licensee as represented by Nicole Jacobson, Registered Agent and Richard Jacobson were present and represented by counsel. Whereas at the meeting of the town board, the board received testimony from Department of Revenue Special Agent Buck Robertson, St. Croix County Sheriff's Office Investigator Michael O'Keefe, Nicole Jacobson, Registered Agent of the licensee, and also received nine exhibits into the record. Whereas the testimony of the witnesses and the exhibits received demonstrate the allegations in the complaint are true and accurate and that the licensee has violated numerous provisions of Wisconsin statutes regarding alcohol licensing. Now therefore, the town board of the town of St. Joseph makes the following conclusions of law. Number one, the licensee has violated Wisconsin statutes, chapter one twenty five, by violating Department of Revenue rules regarding alcohol licensure, Wisconsin statute section one twenty five point zero three. B, engaging in the refilling of intoxicating liquor containers, Wisconsin statute one twenty five point six eight, parent eight, parent A. C, possessing intoxicated liquor with substances, Wisconsin statute section one twenty five point six eight, parent nine. Number two, licensee has violated Wisconsin statutes, chapter one thirty nine, by A, refusing to permit Department of Revenue agents to conduct an inspection of the licensed premises, which is grounds for license revocation pursuant to Wisconsin statute section one thirty nine point zero eight, parent four. Three, the licensee has violated Wisconsin statutes, chapter one twenty five, by maintaining a disorderly indecent or improper house, which is demonstrated by the unsecured loaded weapons the Department of Revenue agents and law enforcement found on the premises, the illegal controlled substances found on the premises, the drug paraphernalia found on the premises, and the repeated incident reports arising from the premises. Now therefore, based upon the testimony of the witnesses, the exhibits received, the recitals and conclusions of law above, all of which are incorporated into the record, be it resolved by the town board of the town of St. Joseph as follows. Number one, licensee's class B fermented malt beverages license is hereby immediately revoked. Number two, licensee's class B retail intoxicating liquor license is hereby immediately revoked. That's the resolution in form.
So do you want to make a motion based on what he just read into the record?
Yes. So. Yes. I move per entrance of resolution twenty dash twenty twenty two dash seventeen. As was just read into the record. And based on the conclusion of law, one, two and three. That Myers GM Enterprise Incorporated, doing businesses Cajun Club, that their class B fermented malt beverages license and class B intoxicating liquor license issued by the town of St. Joseph shall be revoked.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now we can have discussion on this. My, I'm, first of all, I have to apologize for not calling you Robertson and to call you Roberts. I apologize for you on that. You know, I read these reports very carefully today when we got them. And it was late in the day because I didn't get here till after work. There's approximately five or six agents from the Department of Revenue and seven to ten sheriff's deputies that were present on this day. I have a hard time accepting what is being spoken here by the licensee as to what took place on that day. And I have to accept what, I have to accept what law enforcement came in here with and the reports that they provided. And so I have to really weigh in that side of it. And that's kind of where I'm at. Anyone else wish to speak? You ready there? For you? Go ahead.
I've, I've heard everything.
Okay. Lori?
The town of St. Joseph in good faith last June twenty twenty two issued these licenses to a corporation. A corporation is a vehicle as a legal means to run a business. It is not the town of St. Joseph's position to run your business. I don't know who the officers of the corporation are. But either an officer of a corporation, your general manager, or their designee, it is their responsibility to uphold the laws of the state of Wisconsin. And that's if you were not on the premises and you were not present and engaged on a day to day basis of the of the business, there I, my position is I I am, I agreed to a license for an empty vehicle. And so that's where I landed and that your general manager was I don't know if his violations are in Minnesota or Wisconsin or any of those details. But the fact that that person let you down is, goes back on you, not on the town of St. Joseph.
Rick?
Very well said, Lori. That's the bottom line, you guys. Maybe tried your best, maybe not. You you did pay your license fees. I mean, that was all good. We appreciate that. But we, we represent the people of this town. And if we were to say, you know what? Let's just give them another chance. Let's, let's, let's hope they're gonna do better. I'm not sure how many people, if they would have been sitting in here, would would agree with that. And I, I, to represent the town people, I you can come back and try again.
All right, anything else from any board member? If not, we will take a vote and it has to be roll call.
Chris Marshall?
Got to turn on. You have to say it again, please.
Chris Marshall?
Yes.
Rick Colback?
Yeah.
Laurie DeRozier?
Yes.
Teresa Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, so the resolution does stand. We will provide you with a copy. Did you say tomorrow?
No, we can do it. Yeah.
Yes, so we will provide you with a copy tomorrow. And we will provide that to the department and to the St. Croix County. Anything else we have to do on this, sir?
I will just note that transcript of today's meeting can be ordered from this recording at the expense of the licensee, should they so choose. And they have the right to have judicial review of the decision, but they're represented by an attorney and he'll, he'll advise them accordingly.
Anything else from anyone? I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate it.